Antonio Lewis, the Honorable Ishay Collins, and the Honorable Byron D. Amos. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
One moment.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Byron D. Amos. Please open the vote.
The vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The, oh, I'm sorry, the agenda has been adopted. Vote is open for the minutes. Can all council members please vote? Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays, and minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Today, we see some wonderful young faces in the audience. Mr. Overton, what group is this?
Um.
Wonderful young, could you come on up and tell us about these wonderful young individuals? Are they students?
Good afternoon, Councilmember Boone. Okay, good afternoon, Councilmember Boone and all of the council members. Leah LaRue, Director of Neighborhood Planning Units for the City of Atlanta in the Department of City Planning. And the beautiful smiling faces you see here are Atlanta's future leaders. These are rising juniors and seniors from Atlanta's public schools. They will be with us all week, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 4 o'clock p.m., earning some community service credits and a stipend. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. And they will be learning the inner workings of the City of Atlanta, how things work and how to affect change in their communities.
That is wonderful. What schools are they from?
All the, y'all shout your schools out. North Atlanta Drew Charter, Carver.
Women, North Atlanta.
North Atlanta, South Atlanta, Drew Charter, Carver, Maynard Jackson, Midtown. Uh, did I miss somebody? Atlanta Classical Academy, Woodward Academy, Best Academy.
Wonderful.
Anybody else's school that I missed? Tharrell, why didn't you say Tharrell? Tharrell, all the schools.
You all stand up, let's give you all a hand.
Douglas.
Give them a hand. Civic leaders, did you say Frederick Douglass High School?
Yes.
Who's from Frederick Douglass High School?
Chris Gray.
Who's an Astro?
She's in the back right there.
Who's an Astro, raise your hand high. Okay, I went to Frederick Douglass High School.
There you go.
So, welcome, welcome, welcome. And this is the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. And I am so very proud that you all are our guests today. And you can have a seat, and we will proceed without meeting. We are now at the public comment portion of the agenda. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Councilmember Boone, I believe Councilmember Lewis and Ms. Collins would like to speak.
Yes, welcome, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Henri Jordan.
Give me not your spirit of God, everyone that's here. He that committed sins is of the devil, for the devil sent it from the beginning. For this purpose, the Son of God was manifested, yet he might destroy the works of the devil. 1 John 3, Chapter 8, verse. Sins of the devil. Christ came to destroy the devil's deeds.
Ms. Jordan, speaking to the mic.
Oh. Sins of the devil. Christ came to destroy the devil's deeds. Jesus destroyed the works of the devil. In me, what about you? Evil error, go back to your sinner. For rebellion is as the sin of witchcraft, and stubbornness is as iniquity and idolatry. Because thou had rejected the word of the Lord, he had also rejected thee from being king. 1 Samuel 15, Chapter 23, verse. The verse reinforced the Old Testament viewpoint that religious ritual avoids the void of spiritual reality and of awe and of a life of total allegiance to sovereign Lord is worthless. To obey Jesus is wise, and to disobey him is not wise. If we confess our sins, he is faithful in just to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness. 1 John 1, Chapter 9, verse. We ought not to deny our sins, but rather confess them before God. This opens the door for his forgiving and cleansing light to purify our hearts. Jesus forgive me for asking to give James Smith a chance. Whoso diggeth a pit shall fall therein; he that rolleth a stone, it will return upon him. 5 Verses 26, Chapter 27, verse. The wicked is snared in the work of his own hands. James Smith, Microsoft, and other hackers hacks my computer for the income Jesus created through me, for your protection against the enemy. And you agree with their actions. Because, see, I had a vision. The people was in a big bubble that could enjoy the trees and the land atmosphere. The Lord said the answers in the homeless is calling on Jesus Christ has a business plan to deliver the people out of that situation. And this is my goal, that Christ gave me my assignment. And I got to work toward that assignment because I don't want blood on my hands. I fight for it because I need what Christ have for me. Do you need what Christ has for you? He got more for you than you have for yourself. You living on his time that he gave you. You didn't give it to yourself. Thank you, O B J.
Officer English, Code Enforcement. Madison Hull.
Hello, council members. I'm Madison Hull. I'm the, sorry. Hi, council members, I'm Madison Hull. I'm a 12th grade student at Midtown High School. And I wanted to address the problem of teen mental health in Atlanta. Things such as social media and the constant consumption of content online multiple times throughout the day have helped to build stigma against teenagers and help to contribute to things towards, such as gun violence, car break-ins, problems in schools, and out-of-control parties. Teens are the future of Atlanta and the United States. If we don't prioritize their mental health and their growth in the world, it will cause like problems, sorry. Problems in Atlanta include there aren't many activities for teenagers and there aren't many programs to help the growth of teens. Programs like the one currently at the NPU have helped to build brighter futures, diversity, and grow education in teen communities, which can help to decrease problems with teen mental health. Yeah. Basically, I feel like, I'm sorry, excuse me. I feel like problems with teen mental health are like really important because, because teens are the future in general. Like, we are the people who are going to be the next council members, be on the board in the future. I feel like if we don't focus on like problems such as like gun violence and things that have taken over teen communities, content that has like flooded our minds, it will cause, cause more problems in the future, and we won't be able to address these solutions properly. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you very much. Can we find out, what district is Maynard Jackson High? Is it?
District 1.
I thought she said Maynard Jackson.
Midtown, she's Midtown.
She said. She said Midtown? Whose district is that?
District 2.
Alex Juan or Amir Farokh?
It's Amir Farokh, yes.
We want to make sure that each and every student gets a chance to meet their district council member. And I can work with you on that. We have full council on Monday. We would love to see them, okay? Next speaker is Simmons. Last name Simmons. Please come forward.
Hello, y'all. I am Cody Simmons. Uh, I'm a rising senior in Midtown High School. I have been in the field of urban planning since I was in middle school, and I'm an advocate for walkability in the city. I took the transit, the MARTA, to get here from like northern Midtown. And I'd like to know, with such a beautiful city that's really invested on car infrastructure, what are y'all doing to ensure the safety of pedestrians on the road whom either take the transit by choice or do not have the funds or can't afford a personal automobile?
We will address that as soon as we get your information. Where do you live? I want you to meet your district council member.
I live in District 6, just north of Midtown.
Okay, so we want to make sure he meets his district council member, and we appreciate your comments today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Next, Mr. Overton.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, we're aware that we have Mr. Miguel Dominguez in attendance before the committee today for his appointment to the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. If there are no objections when we take item number 35 off of held and hear the, and confirm the appointment.
Please proceed. Please come forward and tell us why you would like to serve on this very important board. And thank you for all you have done in our community.
One, before we begin, this is item number 35, 25C0060, a communication from Tony Roberts, Executive Director and CEO of the Atlanta Bar Association, submitting the appointment of Mr. Miguel Dominguez to serve as a member of the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. This appointment is for a term of three years.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the appointment, which I accept. And I've been told to give a little bit of a bio. I am much like these young folks that are, that are here, product of inner-city life. Took myself to the University of Buffalo, upstate New York, came out and moved to Atlanta and started my career actually in social work and serviced the mentally ill and homeless in this city for several years before attending law school. Went to law school. And my first job out of law school was at the Court of Appeals here in Georgia. I then became a criminal defense attorney. And then for a good majority, almost half my career, I became a state prosecutor and rocked Dell, DeKalb County, Clayton County, became the first Latino prosecutor in those jurisdictions. I later transitioned to civil practice on the defense side. I actually had the honor and privilege of defending the City of Atlanta during my career on many issues stemming from, you know, slipping falls on city property to, you know, unfortunately, police officer shootings. I later transitioned to what I do now. I'm a plaintiff's attorney. And I do personal injury and civil rights. I imagine that's why I was chosen to join this esteemed group. And in terms of what I hope to contribute is, I hope to contribute my continued service to the community and our people in the City of Atlanta. And so, I'm here in service.
Thank you so much. And before we move approval, we have comments from the Honorable Ishay Collins and the Honorable Antonio Lewis. I'll let Antonio go first. That was for previous.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Councilmember Andrea Boone. The, when I heard prosecutor, my wife was a prosecutor for about three years in Fulton County. And so, the prosecutors have been used against black and brown people in different ways. In our last city public safety meeting, our police chief, our police spokesperson used the term that I've been using for four years. We can't lock our way out of this, lock our way up out of these situations. So now, we have APD using the same language that the council is using, that the mayor is using. And so, with the Citizen Review Board, you are the folks that are helping us not lock our way up out of this situation and reimagine public safety in the City of Atlanta. And so, I want to make sure that the progressive, we, we used to get scared of the word prosecutor. And so, the term that, that the young, one of the young ladies in the audience right now, Allison Hunter, she Harvard right now. She's going to be going to law school at Howard pretty soon. But they said that there are progressive prosecutors and, and they have to get into the system to be progressive with it. So, I hope that the same attitude with Citizen Review Board is, is used on that, over there to make sure that we fix Atlanta without trying to lock our way up out of this situation and then hold accountable the police department because we've seen some, I'm quoting in the AJC right now as saying that the Atlanta Citizen Review Board was misled by the police department. I said that, and I stand on that. And I stand on it based on the facts that what they were told on both sides. So I want to make sure that you know that you got some power coming from my side, and we need you to know that we are not trying to lock our way up out of these situations in Atlanta.
You can, you can be assured that I am just that person. My reputation in the community is unmatched for who we represent. We, we represent primarily in my practice victims of police brutality. And as a prosecutor, I was known as one of the most conscientious prosecutors in every single jurisdiction I was in. And I set more of our people free and give more second chances than most even defense attorneys were able to do, just with my pen. So, I appreciate your concern, and you'll, you'll, you'll be able to see, hopefully, in my performance over the next three years.
I'll tell you, when she was a prosecutor, she got in trouble all the time because she would not lock people up in Rice Street. Right, and she was always trying to help people. So she got in trouble all the time about not locking people up. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The Honorable Ishay Collins, followed by the Honorable Byron D. Amos.
Yes, so good to see you again, Mr. Dominguez. I mean, you know, have known you for years as an attorney as well, and didn't even realize how deep of a prosecutor, you know, prosecutor because you've always been that community advocate. I was really excited to see your name as one of the appointments and really want to appreciate Tony at the Atlanta Bar Association for nominating you. I do think that we've had deep conversation about the importance of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board and also even ensuring that the board is now, you know, staffed up with the budget that we've approved. So there are a lot of resources that are coming to the Citizens Review Board and coming your way to really make sure that we get this right for the citizens of Atlanta. So just really excited to see your name here. Very familiar with your work, and I think they could not have chosen a better advocate to serve on this board. So looking forward to your leadership. Good to see you.
Thank you for your kind words, thank you.
The Honorable Byron D. Amos.
My brother, how you doing?
Very good, brother.
Good. I see your stars still shining bright.
Yes, sir.
You know, we know your work, we know your expertise, and we are asking you to do what you already have been doing, taking care of the citizens of our great city. So with that being said, thank you. And motion has not been made, I don't think. If it has not, I proudly made the motion or second your motion.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so I second the motion.
Moved by me, seconded by the Honorable Byron D. Amos. Please open the vote.
All right, vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The item has been, is favorable.
Thank you. At this time, I, I want to ask Mr. Reed to come up. Mr. Reed, will you please just give a brief explanation to our students of what the Atlanta Citizens Review Board? Write that, put that in your phone so you can look that up tonight. But this is Mr. Lee Reed. He is the Executive Director of the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. And Attorney Dominguez is the newest appointment to the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. Mr. Reed, thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Chair Boone, council members. Yes, the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, ACRB, we are authorized to investigate, receive and investigate complaints, citizen complaints against Atlanta police and corrections officers. Why that is important is because policing is one of those government activities that impacts all of us, whether we have a personal contact or one of our loved ones have a contact. We strive to ensure that any citizen's concerns about an interaction with the police officer is investigated. You will be, the results of the investigation will be communicated to you. And it's all about increasing transparency and accountability. Congratulations on your time here with the city this week, and I'm sure you all enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, thank you. We have a brief legislative agenda today. If there are no objections from the body, let's move forward with our legislative items and then return to the presentations afterwards.
That's right. We'll begin with our claims with favorable recommendations.
Can we have a motion to approve the favorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, that's five yays, zero nays. The favorable claims have been approved. Next, we'll take action on our claims with unfavorable recommendations.
Can we have a motion? Moved by the Honorable Ishay Collins, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The items have been averse. Madam Chair, this brings us to our regular agenda. We have one item for consideration today under Resolutions, item number 24. This is 25R3578, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to rescind Resolution Number 25R3299 and authorizing payment in the amount of $3,264.82 in settlement of the property damage claim of Anembaum, Etchibum, and Willet Fussas Veiben against the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Madam Chair, we took item 30, the appointment of Mr. Miguel Dominguez to the Atlanta Citizens Review Board off of the held items list. We have one additional item to bring off of held. This is item number 36. There is a substitute for this item. Will we bring that before the body first? As it does change the caption. This is item number 30.
Do we need a second for that?
We do.
Seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The substitute is before the body. This is item number 36, 2501260, an ordinance by Councilmember Alex Juan as substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, an ordinance to amend the City of Atlanta Code, Part 2, Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Dealers and Manufacturers, Division 2, License, Subdivision 1, General Provisions, Section 10-52, Advertisement of the Intent to Engage in Business, to revise the notice of signage requirements for alcohol license applications and for other purposes. The substitute makes amendments from the Department of Law.
Okay, we have, I'm going to ask the law to opine and explain this piece of legislation. We have a motion to reconsider.
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta, Department of Law. And so, currently, when an application for alcohol license is filed, the applicant is required to post signs on their property explaining what they have applied for and when, when they get an LRB date, when that LRB date will be so that the members of the community can be aware should they wish to attend the LRB meeting or just for their general awareness. This does not really change that requirement. It does provide clarity concerning the requirements for the sign. It sets the, a fairly substantive change is that the, the sign has to be posted within seven days following the submission of the application with the licenses and permits unit. Currently, that is 15 days. So that reduces that time to provide for greater notice. And it clarifies that if an application is updated by the applicant to change like what sort of establishment they are applying to be, that the sign must be updated. And it provides that upon following receipt of your license review board date, once you appear before the license review board, if the LRB doesn't actually take a vote, but instead defers the matter or holds it, that the notice sign would then have to also be updated to provide for that subsequent license review board date.
Question, the Honorable Ishay Collins.
Yes, so just so, just for clarity, you're stating that, I mean, I see from the language from the, the resolution that it shortens the posting period from 15 days to seven days, but that posting period is based on when they actually get the date from the licensing review board once they submit the application, correct?
So, it's from the date of submission of application to the license review board. It is unlikely that an applicant would have an LRB date that is finalized at that time.
Right.
So it requires an update to the sign. And that must occur no later than five calendar days prior to the license review board meeting. Because it's sometimes much, much, it is a very long time or somewhat long time from the original submission of the application until you actually get that LRB date.
Right, and so with this, this is actually creating an additional step for the applicant just in terms of posting? So my question is, what would be the basis of a short? What, what purpose does it, does it serve for us to shorten, to propose to shorten this period? Knowing that on the other side of this, you know, on the other side, the applicant doesn't have the date? Like, what are they, what are they communicating? Seven days at the time they submit their application versus having an additional eight days to get all the information that they need to communicate to the community?
Just a brief point of clarity. This doesn't actually add a step. Currently, in the code, you are required to post upon submission of application. And then subsequently, you are, you are required to provide that LRB date update to the sign. That is the current requirement. This doesn't change that two-step process. It does, as you state, shorten the amount of time between submission of the application to the license review board to when you have to initially post. But as far as why, that is not a legal question. That is a policy question. I'm not able to answer that.
Yeah, and if there is no question, I would like to make a motion to hold, but I think we probably have.
Let's clean the first, let's clean the first motion up.
We had a motion to reconsider. We had a motion to reconsider, is that correct?
Yes, a motion to reconsider. Let's take that motion first. Do we have a second to reconsider?
A second to reconsider?
Seconded by the, seconded, seconded by the Honorable, second, second, motion to reconsider.
What are we reconsidering? What are we reconsidering?
The first motion to move forward.
Madam Chair, there was no motion to approve this item. We just brought the substitute forward, so that's what we said.
Yeah, we just brought it forward, so we can have the conversation on it.
I don't, there is no, there is no need, currently, there's no need for a motion to reconsider.
Okay, great.
Unless, unless Councilmember Lewis would like to take his second off the substitute?
I would like to take my second off the substitute.
Okay.
So a motion to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider the substitute?
Yeah.
But just for clarity, that motion is not to, it wasn't a motion to approve. It was a motion to bring the substitute forward so we can have a discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's what you want?
Yeah, I wanted to do that, so no reason to reconsider.
Got it.
In that case, we can make a motion on the substitute in front of us, however you want to do it.
Yes, and I make a motion to hold the substitute if, yes.
We do have the author of the paper here. Would you like to speak? Councilmember Alex Wong.
I wasn't watching the proceedings, but you had questions on the paper or some policy concerns or clarification? Happy to answer it and then follow the will of the committee.
Do you want me to restate it?
Yes, you have any questions?
Yep, so my question was in terms of the intent behind shortening from a 15-day to a seven-day. Attorney Robertson shared with us what the process is and the notification, the notification requirements that happen for the applicant to notify the community of the license. But she also stated that with, once that date is, the notice goes out, but you still have to update it. So it felt like there was an additional step in between the processes being added, and just wanted to understand the intent of that, and is that true beneficial to the community in communicating the larger part of the applicant, the application for the liquor license, pretty much?
Yeah, a fair question. I appreciate the opportunity to answer that. So this was one of the recommendations that came out of the Alcohol Technical Advisory Group. There was, what is this aiming to prevent or have not happen is that there are, there are instances where a new applicant or someone who is doing a change of ownership or change of agent with an establishment within a community could actually submit an application and then because of the 15-day, actually be able to get onto an NPU agenda without having to post the sign in advance of that. So the community would not ever know that there was a change of the alcohol license application that they could have input at, at the NPU meeting. And so what we're working on in terms of a slew of recommendations and process things is that now you go and you submit your application, APD would actually have the signage there that we're talking about. You just take a Sharpie and you fill it out. They take it with them, and they have seven days to post that on their property. So it's not, we're making it easier, and that's why we're shortening the time while also providing more notice for the, for the community. You know, this, in terms of, you know, and the other piece of this is also to make the sign as more visible from the streets. Right now, the legislation just says in a conspicuous location, which can be interpreted any way that an applicant chooses. This way, we're saying it needs to be on the abutting streets so that when you drive by a location that's trying to get a new alcohol license or change an agent or owner, the community would know, and again, would have the opportunity not only to be at the NPU meeting, but also then have notice as to when the license review board meeting is so that they can participate in that as well. So there is a community objective associated with this, as well as a facilitation for the applicant at APD, license and permits.
I think Attorney Robertson wanted to clarify something for me. Thank you. I hope I didn't confuse that.
Yes, I'm so sorry. I did just want to note that the piece, there is the shortening of the period of time during which the applicant has to post the sign. However, there is not an additional step. It's currently a two-step process.
Got it, okay.
We have a motion, question, the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Thank you, and my question around is, who is this helping making it shorter? Because people always reaching out to us for more time, and we always have to do extensions for pretty much, even as a city, we've reached out to the federal government and the state and county for more time to do things. And I've actually, on the South Side, in my district, I always have to help people with certain things, and it's, they may have forgotten this, they may have forgotten this, and it's a cost thing. I could tell they just couldn't afford an attorney, an attorney for that matter. And so I would see the shortening of time making it a little bit more difficult for people who may not have the finances upfront for some of these things. And every single year, they have to renew their licenses, and even right now, I'm working with people who just didn't, didn't see it because they had a new email address, or they've been working for 40 years and they aren't as technical savvy for stuff. So I'm a little nervous with the shortening of time, so I, I, I'm, we stopped, that we, but I'll leave conversation over, but I don't understand the reason for the 15. Can you give me, me a reason for the shortening of time, thinking about that?
Sure, so this, I just want to clarify, this does not preclude an applicant's ability to extend time. If they need to defer at the License Review Board Committee meeting, they can. All this does is says, when I go and I submit my application, so at that point, I would assume that they've either decided they have the resources to apply for an alcohol license, or they know that they're, have the facility to change their agent or change the ownership, and they've gone to license and permits to submit the form. This just says, you have, instead of 15 days, we're giving you only seven days now to post that sign on your property that says my license review board meeting is going to be on this date, and APD is going to provide you with that sign. Currently, you have to go manufacture that on your own. We're making it actually simpler, and that way, it's one easier step for the applicant, and there's greater transparency for neighborhoods and communities that are watching as alcohol license applications come through their communities.
So I like the, all the additional steps, but I like the 15 days and making sure people can wait. And I'm just thinking about the different entities that we have to deal with when we're getting an alcohol license. A lot of our folks, they're dealing with the county, they're dealing with the city, they're dealing, and the review processes don't come at the same time. They don't know when people are actually coming. And so I'm a little nervous that some of my vendors, some of my operators in my area may be harmed by this, the shortening of days for them. So me, myself, I'm not for this. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the body, so everyone can be clear on this?
I just wanted to say that I support this, and I support it because I think the community needs to know before a licensee goes to the NPU, and that's what this is about. It's about the 30 days of each NPU that meets, and this is a way to ensure better that the community has the information. So all it is, is putting it out there, and I support that, and I was involved in how some of these regulations were put together. And I think the fact that we're making it easy for them to get the actual sign is the most important thing, because we're not sending them to signs or us or someplace to be on their own. So I think it's a really good step forward, both helping them, but also making sure the community is not taken off guard.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I hope that the police department can actually bring the signs out to people and still give them that 15-day period, because we do know that some folks just aren't ready at that time period. And I know that different departments move at different time periods. We, as a city, reach out for, always for extensions, and we don't always get them. A lot of my folks, they reach out for policy, they reach out for extensions right now, and they don't always get them. They're not always approved, and sometimes it's hard for them to come down to City Hall and do it. And so while some people may have the time and the funding to come down or send their attorney down to handle it, some people, they can't. And so to me personally, I know some folks right now who, who I'm walking through steps because they just forgot to do stuff. And so I don't want to add more regulations. I don't want to add more regulations on stuff like this.
I need to clarify two things. Number one, this does not apply to renewals. Renewals all happen at the end of the year, and that's automatic. This only applies if you have decided you need a new application, you're changing your owner, or you're changing your agent. And I should also point out that this happens only after the applicant has come to APD and license and permits and turned in all their paperwork to start this process. So they've already done that piece of it. This isn't adding necessarily an extra burden. It's, when you're here and you're turning in your paperwork, guess what? You can pick up your sign, go put it on your thing, you've got seven days. Again, that is, I just want to make those two clarifications.
Only because I'm the same person who saw APD and the Citizens and Review Board have a dispute in which the conversation wasn't the same as the open record request, I have people in my district who say that APD has held on to some of their paperwork before when they're doing this stuff. So once again, I think that that extra day, that extra seven to ten, seven to eight days, which we've had for this amount of time period, I think we can keep that going. I don't think it hurts anyone. I think that the added steps are amazing. I would add that to it. I just want to, wouldn't want to regulate people to that seven-day period, knowing how slow some of this stuff moves.
The Honorable Byron De Amos.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilmember Wong, for being here to answer these questions. Quick question, have a courtesy copy been sent over to the Mayor's Nightlife Committee?
Yes, yes. I send it to the Chief of Staff, Mr. Donald, as well as the Deputy Chief of Staff and the Nightlife Filanna, all of them, that's part of our protocol at this point, yes.
The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Yes, just, yeah, thank you for this. I mean, it just brings a lot of clarity. It just brings a lot of clarity for me when you read the legislation on its surface. It's just not as clear.
I understand.
But I do think, you know, it is, and one thing that we often hear from our community is the fact that we haven't communicated, or the new applicants for a liquor license, you know, that are applying for liquor license did not come to the community sooner. So this notice requirement, shortening that to seven days, now gives me a deeper clarity. And also, I mean, I'm just going to be very frank, the owners, by the time I will imagine a business owner comes to the city to apply for a liquor license, they have already maneuvered through all of those pieces as they should, as they should have. And so applying for this, I mean, they get the, and also now they don't have to produce the sign, we're providing that for them, and they also still have the opportunity to update on that end. And I think the biggest piece for us was Nightlife, was the Nightlife Committee, was it the committee or commission? I'm still learning, to have voice on. I'm curious to hear, I think Chair Boone's question as well, was there any comments on this? Because we do know that just a pivotal ecosystem in Atlanta, you know, just a key ecosystem in Atlanta as well that we don't want to dismiss on, so.
I have not received a pushback from them. That's generally been the case. I, in all fairness, I have received a notice saying, oh, we're okay with it. But generally, the protocol in the past has been with legislation, they're, they don't have an issue with, they don't comment, and as soon as they have a problem, they'll raise it. I should also point out that this does not take effect until January 1 of 2026, so there's a six-and-a-half-month implementation period to get applicants aware of the new protocols, lets APD get their, all their processes in place as well. So I just wanted, that, there's that added time cushion.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, do you still have a question?
Yeah, just that a lot of our vendors, whenever they come down, they do still have issues, and they still do need help. And I want to make sure that we are giving them the time that they would need. And I just know some folks, whenever they come down, because I have to help them every single year with certain steps with their liquor license, and I don't want them to feel like we're regulating them because they can't afford certain things.
It doesn't apply to renewals, so.
But.
It doesn't apply to renewals, right?
Change of agent.
Change of agent, change of ownership, and new applications, but not renewals. And let me, I should also, the signage requirement is in code right now. We're not adding that. All we're, we're actually making it easier because they can pick it up, and we're, again, I understand your point about shortening the timeframe, but that is meant to be kind of an efficiency thing, and that if there is, again, if there's postponement in the license review board meeting, which happens a lot, it's simple change of the sign, and we're, we're, we're on our way. But I appreciate Councilmember Norwood's point about, this is for transparency for community as well.
So exactly, what is the purpose of shortening the time?
Again, it is for, to prevent a situation where someone can come do this, somehow manage to get on a license review board meeting, and then the community never knew about it because of the, the, kind of the 15-day timeframe. I mean, what we're trying to do, again, is make it easier for the applicant, that they don't have to, that was there when they had to go and produce their own signs, to be quite frank. But since we're taking that step out, standardizing it, we're just trying to make it easier to protect the community. There have been enough examples of communities that licenses, applications have gone through kind of in the dark of night, and we're just trying to help prevent that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Mary Norwood, do we have a second?
Can, we have a motion to hold, correct? Motion to approve.
Motion to move forward. By the Honorable Mary Norwood, seconded by the Honorable Byron De Amos. Please open the vote.
Okay, vote is open. That is, one moment, please. That's four yays, zero one nays. The item is favorable.
All right, thank you, committee members.
Thank you. Councilmember Alex Wong, we have interns here that are from different high schools. This is Councilmember Alex Wong. Many of them are from Midtown High School.
Good to see you all. Thanks for being here today to take interest in our process.
Next.
Madam Chair, that concludes our legislative agenda. We will now, we will move on to presentations at your.
I think I saw Deputy Chief Span here. Are you giving our presentation today? Yes, ma'am. We have Atlanta Police Department crime statistics. Deputy Chief Span is coming forward at this time.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you. I am Deputy Chief Span of the Atlanta Police Department over our Criminal Investigations Division, and I'm here to give a brief update of our stats. First, I do want to say, welcome to the interns. Thank you all for taking the time to see what goes on in our great city. So thank you for being here. Councilmembers, the crime data report that you received, already you see that overall we are down 11%. It appears that our homicides are down 36% to date, our rapes are down 30, excuse me, up 35%. Ag assaults are up 11%. Our robberies are up, excuse me, our robberies are up 33%. Our robberies, our burglaries are down 6%. Motor vehicle thefts are down 40%. Our theft from motor vehicles are down 16%. Shoplifting is up 13%, and all other larcenies are down by 1%. So overall, again, down 11%. When you look at our zones, zones one through six, as well as our airport, are all currently down overall. I do want to add to note, we are working with the Mayor's Office of Violence Reduction on their initiatives to support their, their initiatives related to the National Gun Violence Prevention Month. This month is started June 1st, and so we are supporting them in their efforts on that. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
The Honorable Ishay Collins. The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And thank you for the report today. My questions are following the same ones from last week, and I was hoping that we'd get answered today. My, because it's a simple number. The question was, how many are, because I have reports in my community, and we have reports at the podium that you're at right now, that the City of Atlanta has a certain amount of officers per zone, and the reports were that in my zone, we had the least amount of officers and the least amount of police cars. And so my, my request, and my question was, is if, you can let me know how many officers, police officers we had per zone and police cars we had per zone on December 31, 2024, and how many police officers and police cars we had per zone May 26, 2025? Were you all able to come up with that answer?
Sir, they are currently working on that. It was not as easy for them to pull the information. They are going through the daily activity sheets to count those numbers, as well as to give you an accurate report. As you know, we moved to a different timekeeping system, so it's not as easy to do the audits as we like, but I can assure you, you'll have that information.
Do you know when?
I don't. They are working on it as I speak. I can tell you at this time, though, as you already know, we've seen record numbers in our recruitment efforts. Right now, we have a total of 199 recruits, and we are steadily growing our department on a daily basis. There's 144 of them right now in training, and 48 of them are currently in Class Zero. We have a couple of lateral transfers as well. So we are steadily growing the department, as well as our fleet. As you know, our hope is to have a take-home car for every officer eventually, and so we continue to strive to push that effort forward. But I will make sure that you have those.
And I think, my question is, I know we have record numbers of recruitment. We have the most amount, and our goal is to get to 2,000 police officers citywide, and we're not trying to lock our way up out this situation. The District 12, Zone 3's had the largest drops in the city, as we had a 22% drop last year. But I've been, the numbers I want are very specific, because if we have 199 graduates and 10 are going to one, 10 are going to two, 20 are going to five, 20 are going to six, 20 are going to four, but only two are going to Zone 3. And I just want to know if the, we're judging apples to apples, because that, to me, to pull those numbers, but once again, I'll wait for those numbers, and very specific, I just want to know how many officers we had, because I know we're doing the work, but if we have not had the same amount of officers as the other zones, I don't want to use, I just want to wait till I get the numbers, so as soon as possible.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, for you.
Any other questions? The Honorable Ishay Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, good to see you. Thank you so much for this. So just having, I have a couple of questions as we definitely move into the summer months, is kind of go from our last questions from our last meeting. So looking at the citywide data and looking at each zone, each zone experienced an increase in theft, theft from motor vehicles, and also maybe out of all six zones, four. and also maybe out of all six zones, four have experienced increase in property damages and also motor vehicle theft. Just curious in terms of what are we doing around this time of the year? Where we're just seeing more, again, more people outside. Heat does, there's increase in our aggravated assaults. So we know how, you know, heat can change behavior. What are some of the things that we're doing to ensure more safety for the city during this time? When it's just, I mean, so much is happening. There are some, yeah, it's just, we're just really busy right now. So just wanted to kind of hear more of the strategy behind monitoring these numbers, but also seeing a continuous reduction.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for your question. So every week, we are constantly reviewing our, our crime stats. And of course, as you said or alluded to, the summer months does, we do actually see an increase in crime. And so what we do is we have details on the zone level, where the zones deploy efforts to specific areas that they see larceny from autos and auto thefts going up. But in addition to that, we have several proactive units. That will be our ACE unit, our Apex units. Those teams are constantly going out, as well as even our larceny from auto unit did a detail not too long ago. We also have our different heat wave programs that'll be initiated coming up. And, and so when we look at this and we strategize, we make sure that we're deploying efforts in those specific areas to make sure that we are deterred that criminal element that you may see.
Is there anything, any communications that is, that is going out to the community in terms of, I mean, things that we can do on our end just to ensure safety and, and reduce the possibility of being victims of any crime during this time? I mean, I know we can do increased patrol and increased surveillance, but what about in terms of just the community side of things? And how we also should, you know, make sure things not in our car, things to that nature?
Yes, ma'am. So that's an ongoing effort, 365 days a year, of just trying to encourage people to remove valuables from their vehicles, not leaving weapons in their vehicles. As we've seen throughout the year, just the stats in that area increase with the number of guns that are taken. And so constantly, specifically in our Zone 5 area, we know that that's an area where we typically see a lot of larceny from autos. And so working in partnership with our hotels, the security Downtown Improvement District, as well as Midtown Blue, those are places that we consistently try to make sure that they are aware, that they're pushing out information. But then on the backside of things, our Public Affairs team does a great job in trying to make sure that people are aware of that.
Thank you. I would also like to thank Chief Tyus for meeting me personally with some owners of the BP gas station on ML King Jr. Drive. The neighbors in that community really appreciate him coming out to see the issues plaguing the BP on ML King Jr. Drive. So thank you for that. And also, we need to speak with the captain in Zone 1 regarding 3669 ML King. We are still having problems with that sitco. It's called Pure now. But as of today, we got word that over the weekend, there were all types of activities at 3669 ML King at that sitco and the mini mart.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Any more questions or concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next report, Atlanta Police Department Code Enforcement Quarterly Update.
So good afternoon, Public Safety Committee members, Madam Chair, greetings. My name is Captain Jeff Baxter. With the Code Enforcement Section, to my right is Senior Program Manager TJ English. And I will be presenting today on behalf of Deputy Director Daphne Tally and our Deputy Director, Leanne Parks. But before I get started, I would like to acknowledge our students in the room and to piggyback off of what Chief Span mentioned. I invite you to follow us on our socials and take a look at us and consider joining the Atlanta Police Department, right? The philosophy is, is that the people should be the police and the police should be the people. And so I invite you, follow us. And when you turn 20 years old, take a look at us. So if you want to be the change that you want to see, come join us. And I invite you to that, so.
Question, how many students know what code enforcement is? Raise your hand if you know what code enforcement is. We have one, we have one hand, we have two hands. So will you give us a brief explanation of what code enforcement is before we go into the report?
Sure, so.
Listen carefully.
We're not the sexiest part of the Police Department, but we do serve a purpose. And that is, when you see blight, when you see abandoned properties, when you see burnt out structures, when you see those things that plague neighborhoods.
Junk vehicles.
Junk vehicles. That's where we step in and try to get people to comply in cleaning up their properties and removing junk cars and trying to make neighborhoods better through those efforts. And so primarily, we operate through 311. So if you live in a neighborhood and you see an issue with a house or a car or something that has to do with blight, you can call 311. Those complaints are put into a queue.
Let me ask another question. Who knows what blight is? If you know what blight is, raise your hand. Okay, they don't know what blight is.
Nasty looking houses and cars, cars that are broken down, houses that are burnt out that you see, you know, abandoned properties.
Blight is, is things that make the community unsightly, such as abandoned structures that are not taken care of, grass that, that is tall as you are, junk vehicles, all types of things. Trash in the front yard or in the backyard, weeds and just unkept property. That is what blight is, okay?
And there's also a safety and security component. And so when houses are abandoned, structures are abandoned, vehicles are abandoned, those are opportunities for crimes to take place, for people to get hurt in. And so there's also a specific need to address those things on the name of public safety. And so we take that job very seriously, so.
So we are going to start the report, and I want you all to take notes. And at some point, we will address your questions, okay? We are ready to proceed with our Code Enforcement Section Quarterly Report.
So Madam Chair, before I get started, I do want to back up for just a minute on a completely unrelated matter, but still pertaining to public safety. So if I could take us back a few weeks to Memorial Day weekend, we had the 48th Annual Atlanta Jazz Festival, right? And so 48th Annual, it was well attended. Thousands of people came through each day. I had the privilege of being able to coordinate the public safety efforts for that event. But I would like to publicly thank and acknowledge the new Executive Director of Cultural Affairs, Adrian Jefferson. This was her first Atlanta Jazz Festival, and she did a great job in jumping in and making that event happen and be what it's always been. And so I just wanted to acknowledge her. All right, so we'll jump in. So as it relates to code enforcement, we'll start out with the graph that you see here related to our inspections. As you can see, we have Q3, Q4, the end of last year, and then Q1 for this year. And those account for our inspections, our court cases filed, and our resolved complaints. And so as you can see, when we look at Q1 this year, we are trending in the right direction, especially as it relates to our resolved complaints and our inspections. And so that is the meat and potatoes of what we do with our inspections, filing those cases in court, and then getting folks to comply and resolve issues that are brought to our attention. And so I would say to the students in the room is that, you know, our philosophy is that we, we look for compliance. So before we try to tear your house down or tow away your car, we're always looking for everything that we can possibly do to get that individual to comply before we get to that point. And so I think that's important to note.
And we give them 30 days, is right, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
We give folks 30 days to come into compliance and make sure that everything is correct.
And we're also very liberal when it comes to giving extensions. If there's circumstances that are beyond someone's control and they bring those to our attention, we're always welcoming and being able to provide extensions as well. So one important thing to note here is that we have an operational shift that has taken place when it comes to our NREM process. And so our NREM process is the process that we go through in dealing with a house that either needs to be demolished or what we call clean and closed, boarded up and secured. And so the process in which we do that has been historically an administrative process, where there's been an administrative board, they hear the cases on the addresses, and then they make their ruling as to what the outcome should be. What we've done is we've actually switched now to a judicial NREM process, where those cases are now presented to a judge and municipal court, and that judge will issue the order on what will happen with that property. And so that's a pretty significant change in the way that we've operated. Now, the major reason for this change is that what it does is it creates a priority lien on that property for us to be able to recoup the funds that were expended to either demolish or clean and close that house. And so historically, in the administrative process, we would miss out on being able to recoup those funds because we were so far down the ladder when it came to liens. But now, with the judicial process, it puts us second in line, right behind property taxes, when it comes to being able to recoup money. And so we think that will definitely have a positive effect, and we will finally be able to recoup funds that historically we've not been able to. And so that's the most significant difference. So we started things off with the judicial NREM proceedings back in May, where we presented six cases in municipal court, where we've had two demolition orders issued and four resets, where we've allowed for time for those owners to be able to come back. And so I would like to thank City Attorney Shamia Washington. So she did a great job in jumping in there and kickstarting this judicial NREM process. She presented those first six cases, and she laid out the blueprint and the recipe to get this done. And so moving forward, our Solicitor's Office will now present those cases now that the standard and the blueprint has been set by Ms. Washington. Our attorneys in the Solicitor's Office will now present those cases in municipal court. And just as a snapshot, we expect 60 cases to be submitted over the next three months as we spin things up and start to churn things out in terms of those judicial NREM proceedings. Up next is an overall snapshot of our compliance resolution. Our compliance resolution are things that we've already done in terms of dealing with properties. And so you can see this data here is from January to May, so we're looking at Q1 this year. We've executed 26 demolitions. 16 have been awarded to our contractors. We've conducted 13 clean and closes, and we've had eight clean and cuts executed. As you can see from this picture here, this was 2903 Third Avenue. This was a multifamily dwelling in District 12. And so that was demolished just last month. I know that was a problem property that plagued District 12. And so that was one of our wins for Q1. We continued to work with the Mayor's Office and their Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. To my right, Mr. English here is our Program Manager, and he continues with his team to tackle these multifamily dwellings within the city. An example here of a first quarter win is 2800 ML King, multifamily dwelling with 171 units. We conducted a detail back in January of 2024. And since those 60 violations that were found, we continued to put pressure on those owners, resulting in $26,000 in fines, and then ultimately getting that owner to obtain a permit to demolish that dwelling. And so that dwelling should be knocked down soon. And so that was a tremendous effort with our Sashi unit.
Thank you all so much. Great work, great work. Students, do you all see the blight on the, on the screen? Those are apartment complexes where folks were living. And we did have a very success story from our Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. This parcel on ML King, known as Seven Courts, will be demolished. Thank you.
That's correct. And I'm going to jump back real quick. Mr. Lewis, if I could bring to your attention, so one of our wins for first quarter was the demolishing of 2903 Third Avenue. And so that was a complex that, as you know, generated many complaints and was a blight there in that neighborhood. And so I'm happy to report that during the first quarter, that was one of our wins. So finally, the Vehicles for Hire Enforcement Group falls under our Code Enforcement Section now. And so just historically, snapshot back in 2017, Vehicles for Hire Enforcement packed up and went to the airport, where they've been operating and understanding the need for enforcement through Chapter 162 of the City Code for our Vehicles for Hire, knowing and understanding that that needed to happen outside the airport. We now have three trained Vehicles for Hire Enforcement Officers that are out on the street in our Buckhead and Midtown and Downtown corridors, engaging with our hotels, working with ground transportation individuals, and preparing for the World Cup and making sure the ground transportation aspects are able to be enforced. And so with that being said, that's the end of my presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yes, I would like to thank Director Tally and Ms. Selena Beasley for the hard work that they have done in the Prairie View, ML King Jr. Drive, being very responsive to those citizens. And just wanted to give them a thank you on behalf of that Neighborhood Planning Unit. Any other questions or concerns? The Honorable Ishay Collins? The Honorable Antonio Lewis?
So first, I want to say thank you to the Code Enforcement, Ms. Director Tally and Mr. English. I know that we legit walked through the, the Third Avenue Southwest Dwelling and Galler before you got all these promotions and now you're in this building with us. But you and I, we had to put on our boots and we, we climbed some fences. We went through some shortcuts and, and so I truly appreciate, because this is a 30-year issue. This is an opportunity to bring in some true affordable housing to Atlanta. And so truly thank you for this, because I know that you had something to do with this, bro. The next thing is always, on the exit ramp for Cleveland Avenue 75 South, coming from City Hall, Amber, Amber Gray is still there. So as much help as we can, because now it's becoming even more. We're getting even more people who are outside and they need a little bit more help. We have a few more houses that need to be looked into in our area. And Nicole should be reaching out with the addresses, so I don't have to give them out online right now. So Nicole will be reaching out with the addresses for the places that we need.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The Honorable Byron De Amos?
I realize some of these may be leading over into the legal aspect of what you do. I think I seen our deputy solicitor here, hopefully she is still. First of all, just like everyone is saying to Director Tally and her team, thank you. They are always responsive. The issue is they're responsive to repeat offenders. What is the escalating ladder that we can do when we're constantly seeing these same houses, same development projects being cited, going to court? Couple of weeks later, we're back out there again. So like I said, this may be more of a legal thing other than enforcement thing. And Deputy Solicitor Shae, how you doing? What, what can we do as a community to ensure that once you do the hard work of finding the owner, citing the owner, get them in the court? I know it's going to go to a judge conversation. At that point, what can the community do to help you to ensure that the fines are being enforced and cleanup is actually being done?
Right, so it's a great question. I mean, in, in terms of code enforcement, we're going to continue to issue those citations and to get those folks in court. And I would defer to Madam Solicitor in terms of the specific techniques, but what I would say is that invite your folks to come to court. There's a lot of times where court. There's a lot of times where court proceedings happen, and those complainants, or those fellow neighbors, others that live in a complex, don't come to court to voice their opinion. And so, I think there's times that where the judge hears from the community in the courtroom, that can help push things over the, over the top, if that makes sense. But I will defer to Madam Solicitor for specifics.
And if there's something you can share, because I know a lot of this is legal proceedings, but how can the community help you?
Erica D. Smith, Deputy Solicitor, thank you for your question. And to piggyback what Baxter was saying, it is imperative to come to court. Have your voice be heard by the judge. There's a thing, it's the victim impact statement, where the community can speak on their behalf of how the blight is affecting them, affecting their, you know, their property, their, their property value. So, it is imperative to come to court. I can speak for the victim, who's the community, but who's better to speak towards how it is affecting someone than that person themselves? And they have the opportunity to do that. So, I would encourage people to, number one, call, make the complaint, and follow your complaint. Follow it through court, and make sure that your voice is heard.
Thank you. I do know in this admin work, you sent out things when it's regarding to NREM, how many houses or things are going into NREM. Is there a mechanism that you can start sending to council people to talk about code infractions, to let us know where it is? Because as we attend PU meetings, as we attend neighborhood meetings, people specifically ask about cases. So, I don't know if there's a spreadsheet or email that you can begin to send to my colleagues and I that can tell us where these different citations are in the system?
There is, yes. We can certainly send that out to you, and you might already receive, I'll have to double check, but we do present a list of those properties that are going to be presented in NREM proceedings, but I'll double on that.
We get those, but I'm talking about the general code violations, like the open house sitting next door to my grandmama aunt's down the front, those down the street, those are the ones that we can report out to the community. Because people, they don't see your citations, they don't see the people in court, the only thing they see is that open house still there. If we can say that house was cited last week, it's in court, then it gives them a little bit more, you know, security and a better feeling about the work that we do.
So, if we sent you the list of everything, your, your finger would be scrolling so far, you wouldn't, you know, it would, it would fall asleep, just based on how big the list is. But if, if you have specific addresses before a meeting in a particular neighborhood, we can certainly pull those addresses for that certain neighborhood and have that for you.
Oh, definitely, because in all honesty, my team can tell you, we got cases five years now unresolved, and I know we want to clear those up, some kind of way they slip through the system.
Right, we can also break that down by NPU, if, if that's helpful too, we can break that down.
Okay, well, we'd love to be your test subjects to figure out how we get this right for everybody else. The next thing is rooming houses. I think we're going to naturally take care of that, hopefully with the 2.0 changes, because we're still getting played by rooming houses, but we understand there's legal things, you know, you guys got to get inside just to inspect it, and then, a lot of people don't realize they are still legal to some certain aspect in, in the city. I would be remiss if I just don't mention Magnolia Park. I was over there this weekend, and I see Deputy Chief Span is gone, but we was out there this weekend, Solicitor's Office, offender alumni, curb violence, and a host of other people. And it's sad, it's sad. I know housing authorities going through some legal things with, with the officer, I mean, with the owner of the property, but our residents deserve better, and everything that we can do to get them to that better state, I am definitely on board in doing. So, when you, please send me whatever code violations you have for Magnolia Park.
So, we do have active code violations that are in the pipeline for Magnolia Park, and I would actually let our Program Manager, Mr. English, speak if he has, I think he might have a little more specifics on Magnolia Park.
I mean, because when, and yes, please speak, because when that person go to court, I will personally pay for the bus to bring my residents down. You will have your victim statements, you will.
Yeah, I made sure you're aware of that. We're actually in the process of compiling, compiling a civil complaint against the owner of that apartment complex, so they should be in court as early as September, no later than October for the code violations. I just personally did that inspection myself a few weeks ago, and as you stated, it is, it has gotten worse as of recently, and we're going to make sure they're held accountable for that.
How do we expedite that? September, October is too long. Is there a way, may not be a way, but I got to ask?
Yeah, we have to prepare, we have to, in a very meticulous manner, prepare our case to court, because we want to make sure that when we go through that civil process, they are held accountable, but if they don't show up, we can file the necessary liens on the property or whatever. So, that's why the lengthy, the process is so lengthy or whatever regarding that issue.
I understand, thank you. Madam Chair, you?
Thank you. I have a simple question. What about those neighbors that are not cutting their grass, and the grass now is just out of control in some of our great neighborhoods? What can we do to get those owners quickly, or do we have a mechanism where we can cut them and then charge the owner? How, how can we get that done with the grass that's really grown up all over the city?
Yeah, so, I mean, the easiest mechanism would be 3-1-1, and, you know, that is a violation of the Atlanta Housing Code. And so, I mean, that would, that would get the process started. But if we get to the point to where there is not compliance from the homeowner, yes, a contractor can be selected by Code Enforcement, and that contractor can go out and cut that grass, and then ultimately, a lien can be issued on that house, but, so, yes.
Okay, also, I saw something on the news regarding Bolden Apartments. I think that's in Council District 4. A large special was done on that apartment complex. Are you all aware of that?
We, we are aware of that, and so, again, I know Mr. English has been working on that, and so, I'll let him speak on that.
Mr. English, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Exactly where is that located? Because they also own complexes other places where folks do not have power and other things.
Yeah, their, their apartment complex is located at 1240 Oakland Drive Southwest, which is near the intersection of Oakland and Kelton Road Southwest. I was literally out there this morning, and they had the team out, cutting the grass, removing the junk, trash, and debris, and going from apartment to apartment, checking to see which tenants had issues, literally making arrangement to move tenants out of those issues with the electrical issues. And I met with the representative that was there as well, and they're in the process of completing an application for those items that is going to need a permit to, to complete. So, that, that process, we've been made aware of that, we've addressed it with them, we've put them on notice, and they are in the process, literally now, of correcting those violations and moving the people out of those units that are unlivable.
Okay, because some folks were reporting they did not have a refrigerator as well, and stove's not working. And also, there's, I think, the same owners own other apartment complexes, so can we please check those out as well?
Yes, we will, we will definitely look into that.
Thank you for going out over the weekend to take care of those residents in Council District 4. We have been in touch with that council member as well. The Honorable Byron D. Amos?
Yes, very quickly, just want to remind people of actually event that all of you are involved in. So, City of Atlanta, this Friday, June 13th, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, the Municipal Court will be doing an open house with the presiding judge that sits over Housing Court, and they want the community to come down, they want the community to be involved. You can get a lot of your answers, question, I mean, your questions answered then. So, this Friday, June 13th, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, at the Municipal Court, 150 Garnett Street. Come out, let, let, they are asking, how can they better help us? Here's a perfect opportunity to get involved and get the answers and information you need around Housing Court and Code Enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Do we have any other questions or concerns? Thank you all so much. Please relay those accolades to Director Tally and Selena Beasley and their entire teams. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, a report. Students, we enjoyed you all, and we hope that you all learned something from us today, and we hope to see you all again before you leave. Thank you so much, Director LaRue. Thank you. Attorney Kenneth Days, Office of the Public Defender.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I think that's a bad sign when everybody leaves when I come up to present. But no, I do want to welcome and commend the students for, for being here today. I think, you know, it's very important to have our future City of Atlanta leaders present. Again, good afternoon, I'm Kenneth Days, I'm the Director and Chief Public Defender for the City of Atlanta's Office of the Public Defender. I think a few months ago, I stated to Public Safety Committee that our office was going to be doing more to provide you with updated statistics about some of the work that we do, and to provide you with those metrics, and this presentation stays consistent with that. Some of our case statistics from January to through May, you'll see here, but I'd like to highlight the number of in custody cases that, that we've been handling, some of those that are opened and closed. What that represents primarily are people who have been arrested, and our appearance at, at first appearance, what's known as first appearance. It's not a mandated process for our office, but it's one of the things that our office thinks is a critical stage of our representation, so we make sure that we are there at first appearance. You'll also see on, on this slide, I'd like to make note of, for the referrals made for the unhoused. And what that is for us is beginning that process, because we have such a sort of forward-facing ability to engage with some of our unhoused citizens, we start the intake process to get them to emergency shelter immediately. And so, that's what that statistic primarily represents. And, and the big column at the very bottom, the big graph that you see there is representative of the video evidence that is requested for the cases that, that we have. And that has increased substantially, primarily due to the body worn cameras that law enforcement wears, and also dash cam that's presented in automobiles. And of course, on each and every one of those cases, we're required to review those, and so, it, it gets to be, as you can tell, a very laborious process for us, because you have to look through all that body cam and dash cam to make sure that we're providing best and consistent representation. On our total cases handled, this is again, providing numbers for total cases since January, and the number of closed cases for some of our largest practice groups, which includes our in custody and DUI representations. This is more or less a closer snapshot of the total cases closed by month to month and in Q3. This is the exact same statistic for our in custody cases, month to month, and for And then, a snapshot of the total number of DUI cases handled since January and within the third quarter. And then, of course, our total number of closed DUI cases for that same period of The ALS cases represent what's known as Administrative License Suspensions, or ALS hearings, and that is a, sort of accompanies the DUI representation. When you are charged with a DUI, a component of that is also that there is a likelihood that your license can be suspended in a civil proceeding, and we, of course, represent our clients along with that, because it is a critical stage of the representation within the DUI practice. This is my favorite part of, of, of doing these presentations, because I get to talk about some of the positive things that, that happen with our interactions between our staff and the clients that we serve. First, want to talk about, there were four separate clients that we were able to get to mental health treatment within this past quarter. And I want to give credit, because some of those members are here, with the Department of Corrections and the Solicitor's Office. There's a lot of, a lot of being able to provide that, that care, what we consider care over confinement. A lot of the ability to be able to provide those opportunities, to be able to have someone placed. You have to have some cooperate, some level of cooperation between the Solicitor's Office and, and Corrections as well, and, and thank you to them for, for allowing us to, to serve people in that capacity and get them treatment that is so critical to their well-being. Just as well, we had a client also arrested on traffic charges about a month ago. This individual's car was impounded that had critical documents within the car that could have prevented a deportation. And so, as part of the representation, it became very important for us to, to find out where the car was, but also retrieve the documents from the car, which if anybody has ever had a car compounded, you know that's a very hard process in of itself, but compounded, if your client is in custody at the time, that you're trying to make that happen. But I want to give credit to our investigators, who were able to actually pull the officer's body cam footage to find out which tow company it was that took the car, because it was not a normal tow company that, that, that particular precinct used. So, there was a, a lot of coordination amongst our staff to, to find the car, and then be able to go and retrieve the documents out of the car, which ultimately led to this person being released from custody. And so, you know, these very small things that you don't think about tend to be big issues, but again, giving credit to our, our amazing investigator staff for making that happen. And third story we like to talk about is a couple of individuals that we represented that were charged with urban camping, which is effectively sleeping in the park or sleeping out on the street. We were able to support these clients in first, getting emergency shelter, and we are currently working with them now to be placed in permanent housing. And the reason why this is such an important story is because it's, it's something that we do every month, but I, I want to just bring some attention to it, because it, sometimes that process can, can be very arduous and take six months to years to get someone to be able to transition from urban camping into permanent housing. That placement process is not easy, but it takes a lot of dedication and persistence. We have been very active with our outreach. This last quarter, we hosted a cookout and a kickball event all in one. We've done several meal distributions as we do each month, and we continue to conduct our many legal clinics. But we also have secured some new jobs for, for some of our clients. So, these are all important distinctions, which we have some pictures here. That's our, our barbecue and kickball game event that was, that we hosted as an office with the Next Level Boys Academy last month. And here, the picture on the right shows the 50 individual supply kits that consisted of toiletries and other non-perishable items that were distributed to some of our unhoused And we have continued our, our partnership with Atlanta House Proud, which has been extremely successful in providing, on our end, legal assistance to some of our legacy residents. I think Atlanta House Proud does an amazing job in, in helping some of these folks comply with code enforcement, as you just heard, preventing people from being proactive and preventing some of that blight. And we gained a couple of new employer partners this quarter, which is always good, and that's something that we recognize that is, is critical and invaluable in securing opportunities for the vulnerable population that we serve. Our holistic employment program, which represented the HEP, our HEP is our holistic employment program, in this past quarter, I'm sorry, since January, we have served 46 clients, and that is 46 clients becoming employed through resources that our office provide, some of our partnerships. And that is 46 clients becoming employed through resources that our office provide, some of our partnerships. And having 14 successfully employed clients out of 46 engagements represents about 30%, which is an incredibly successful number. And I want to point out, if we've got 46 people that we were assisting, and 14 of those we were able to have employed, and those employments are still ongoing because we continue to engage with these individuals long after the interview process, long after the first day on the work. We want to make sure that that employment is sustainable. But again, that 30% success rate is very high considering that that's not our core function. But we're very proud of that because that in and of itself provides an incredible amount of community stability. Some of our staff highlights recently have been one of our senior attorneys, Jenny Hernandez, spoke at the American Bar Association's Indigent Defense Summit. We've got one of our client advocates, Colleen Higgins, who was an invited speaker for the GCAA conference. We had two of our attorneys accepted into some very competitive trial practice programs. And they'll begin those, that actual training process towards the end of the summer. And we were also accepted into, accepted by the Immigrant Justice Corps, the IJC, to host a law fellow in the fall. And thank you to this council, this actual council, you council members approved our acceptance of a $156,000 grant to house those fellows. So thank you very much for that. Some of the things that we're working on as the next steps are increasing the capacity for our legal clinics. We also want to obviously increase the number of employer partners that we have so that we can provide more and more job opportunities for our citizens. And we are going to be accepting some of the invitations that we've recently gotten for some national engagements to speak about specifically municipal public defense practice. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have, and I appreciate your time.
The Honorable Byron D. Amos.
Yes, sir. Thank you, as always, Director Days. I missed your budget presentation because I was coming to ask. Every year, your team put together a wonderful program to help our senior citizens who may have fallen upon hard times, got a code violation. And you're on your team normally a lot of times out of your pocket to do so. I'm wondering, did we put anything in the budget to help sustain that? Not too late, but it's too late. But how can we be involved more proactively as a council office to help our citizens who may have to appear before code enforcement?
Yeah, on the budget side, we don't have a specific line item for those. I think that's something that I would like to talk about because there may be ways, because we've sought in the past ways to have a direct line item for those types of activities. But because we often can't define the need upfront, you know, sometimes it's just day to by day. We get a phone call, the person identifies a need, and then we have to provide a solution, you know, somewhat quickly. So it's very difficult to kind of gauge what the costs are going to be. But we think we may have some solutions that we'd like to discuss, you know, maybe offline, that we can get to that solution perhaps for next fiscal year. But yes, we have gotten a budget we think will adequately speak to our ability to continue the capacity where we are. But again, we always are trying to tweak to make sure that we increase that so that, increase our capacity so that we can serve more individuals. The more individuals we serve, the better off, you know, the city is as a whole. And it's obviously cheaper to do that proactive work than it is to come behind. The enforcement process becomes way more expensive than the proactive prevention aspect.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Madam Chair, you?
Yes, I would like to thank you all for doing a spectacular job, being responsive to those that show up that need help. We really appreciate your office and value your support that you all are giving to the citizens that need help. Do we have any more questions or concerns? The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Thank you. Great presentation. I just have one quick question.
Yes.
In looking on page slides six and seven for clarity. You said from January to May of this year, there is about 231 DUI cases from the same period that was 303 closed? Just curious, how many do we have? I mean, how many do we have total?
Well, right now, I couldn't give you an exact figure. As an office, though, we typically have about anywhere from 700 to 1,000 active cases. Just in DUI. So that's about our normal number of active cases, is anywhere from 700 to about 1,000.
Can we get that information for Madam Chair? Is it possible to get that information for our next meeting, the DUI case? Just because we know, like, again, summer.
Mr. Overton, will you please put that in our notes?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I should be able to have that for you before the week is out.
It's okay. Thank you.
Do you have any interns this summer?
Yes, we are going to be hosting, I think, four interns.
That is really great. Thank you all. I hope they learn a lot.
Yes.
And have a little fun with it. I see you all go out in the community. And I want to give a special thank you to House Proud. Ms. Lisa Jones with House Proud, they do wonderful work for our senior citizens in the city of Atlanta. If no more questions or concerns, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Days. And do we have some interns left here? Do we have any interns here? Come up to the mic and just give us your name and where you go to school.
Yes.
I love these young, bright faces. I think I met one.
These are the interns from Ms. Collins's office.
Please give us your name and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Azasia Green. I'm a rising senior political science major on the pre-law track at Spelman College.
Congratulations. I hope you learn a lot this summer at City Hall. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tori Crowder. I go to the Winston-Salem State University. And my major is Rehabilitation Science Studies, and I'm a rising senior. And yeah, I'm from Atlanta, the west side.
What high school did you go to?
North Springs Charter High School of Science and Arts.
Okay. Congratulations. Next intern.
Hi, my name is Campbell Bryant. I just graduated with my bachelor's of mass communication from Loyola University, New Orleans. And I'll be attending Georgia State in the fall for my masters in public policy.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much for being with us today. And before we adjourn, I would like, thank you Solicitor Smith. I know you went out to the old Sitco on Thursday, and it is really plaguing our community. Please let us know whatever we need to do to attend court located on ML King Jr. Drive. I think the name now is Pure. I'm not sure if the same folks own it or not. But we do have serious problems every weekend and at night at the same Sitco gas station. Thank you for your work. And I want to thank our corrections team that's here. If you all will please stand, thank you all so much for being here. They do a great work. Let's give them a hand. We celebrated Corrections Week last month, and we had a wonderful celebration, a wonderful lunch. Gave out awards to some of our dedicated and diligent servants that are on the ground every day. Again, thank you to the Department of Corrections. If there are no more concerns or questions, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.